Everyone has a revelation, your spirit is moving. Oh yes, your spirit is working. Everyone has a revelation. Everyone has a revelation, your spirit is moving. Oh yes, your spirit is working. Oh Jesus, oh Jesus is here. The here in our midst, he's here in our midst. He's moving. Oh yes, he's moving. Oh, Jesus is here. Oh, he's here in our midst. He's moving. Yes, Lord, he's moving. Amen. So just in preparation for what we've got, what?
He just followed me on Instagram.
That's good connections. Okay, um, praise God. Okay, that's fine. I know this topic is long. God will help me. Yeah, but I just felt like that. I didn't want to title it that because I hope that I will do like a longer series on this. But we can do anatomy main and anatomy two. Anyways. Um, so we're, we're, we're titling this the anatomy, well not the, but anatomy of the move of God in special meetings. I know it's long. I first did anatomy of the move of God. I was like, ah, that's too general, right? It's too broad because that one is a teaching for like five years, every Sunday. Because God has been moving and there are plenty things, but we want to just hone it down into special meetings, yeah? Special meetings, meetings that we call special. We've had two previous teachings before titled preparing for special meetings, right? And um, um, maybe one of them, only one of them is recorded, I think. But we did one again recently. And the reason why we, we, we do this is because when it's time for special meetings, it's best for us to have, to be prepared, right? Um, to be prepared. And there's something that I just feel like I need to talk about. And um, that is something specific. You know, when it comes to special meetings, we have to know what exactly they mean. Right? In one of our previous teachings, let me just pull up that note. Um, we, in preparing for a special meeting, you know, just as a form of a background to what we have now, um, we, we have said a couple of things. We say that meetings are special because one, God instructed and instituted such meetings, right? We call a meeting a special meeting because God instructed it. God instituted it. For instance, in Numbers 11, um, God told Moses, it says, gather seventy elders, people who you know are elders. Not just random folks, people who you know are elders among the tribes. Gather seventy of them and bring them to a specific place at a specific time. And this will happen, you know, that's a special meeting. In the same vein, he said, all of you that want to eat meat, gather together yourself too. You will eat meat, right? And some of them ate and there was destruction for them anyways. But you find out that a special meeting is because God orchestrated it, right? God said, let's have this here. Let's have this now. Good. And then another would be because the people have determined it to be so. Right? The people have determined it to be so. So people come together and they say, let's have a meeting. An example would be in Nehemiah, Nehemiah chapter eight, verse one. You know, two, three, you'll find out that the people came together and they said, the priest Ezra, the priest should come and read to them, right? Ezra, the priest should come and read to them. And that's, that's important to take note of. And God met them there, right? God didn't say, well, I didn't call for this special meeting. You guys are on your own. I'm not there. You know, the Bible says that Jesus said to them, he says, wherever two or three are gathered in my name, there am I in their midst, right? So when two or three people come together, I like that he didn't say when a thousand people come together because some, some spectacular special meetings have been in few numbers. For instance, look at the transfiguration. It was just Jesus. In fact, remove Jesus, Jesus was not, he was part of visitors in that meeting. It was just Peter, James and John, just the three of them. And then they had such an encounter, such an experience that Peter would then write about later and say, Jesus told us not to talk about this until it was time, until he had come and gone, right? So you find such spectacular meetings and Jesus said, when two or three are gathered, you know, like I said to us before, that I, one of my mentors said something, he said, wherever Jesus is, there's church. And that's the truth. It doesn't matter where you have it. It doesn't matter um, whether it's in somebody's house or in a hotel or in a club, right? If the club gives us their place, say, well, on Sundays, nobody comes to clubs, so you can use it for church. Oh, God, they honor the light. They even have good ambience, right? And then we'll be inviting the club people, the people who stay overnight. When they wake up, we'll give them tea, coffee, just hang out a bit, just for now, just about two hours. So we'll start services like around six AM so that we can catch them and then before they leave. But it doesn't matter where we meet, right? It doesn't matter where we meet. Now, I'm saying that in the sense of Jesus is everywhere and wherever two or three are gathered, he's there in their midst. That doesn't mean that we just wake up in the morning and say, today, our, our service is space service. Then all of us go and climb in a plane and then jump out parachute and then we hold our hands. And then we'll be doing kumbaya, my lord, kumbaya. No, no, no. So no, no jokes like that, right? Just that when people choose to gather together in the name of Jesus, he's there. Right? In the name of Jesus, he's there. All right. And then another thing that makes a meeting special would be from the perspective of the people attending such a meeting. Um, okay, just give me a minute. It would be from, from the perspective of the people attending such a meeting. You know, when people attend a meeting and then they, um, they have expectations and they have desires. They have expectations and they have desires. You know, such a place is, or such a thing is what we call a special meeting. You know, such a, such, such, such a place where men come together and do a thing and they have a desire that, oh, we want to see God, we want to reach God. Then it is important for us to note that, um, it is a special meeting in that sense. And then fourthly, or number four, I know they said there's not like fourthly, or fifteen. Number four would be that God has times and seasons. Right? Times and seasons. And so God can say, this is what I want to do. For instance, in God's mind, he decided that Jesus will come at the time when he came. You know, there was nothing that could have happened that would make Jesus come earlier. So around when David was just doing his thing and then they just say, ah, for unto us a child is born, even though he will be born in the future, but he's born now. And then they just smuggle him in and all that. No, 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 no. There was a time for all of that to happen. So when such periods appear, then men take advantage of it because it is a special meeting. Right? So you find out certain moments, certain times, certain, um, orchestrations by God, certain desires by men, certain, um, instructions by God to do so and so would pass as a time for, um, um, a, a special meeting, right? It's time for a special meeting. Let me give you an example. You know, in Exodus, the Bible said that, is Exodus now or Deuteronomy? God told them, he said, this is what will happen. You're gonna have manna, but what will happen is that it is in the morning when the dew comes, as the dew goes, you'll see the manna. So anybody who came out before that time wouldn't see anything. Do you understand what I'm saying? So in God's time, there's a way he wants to do it. And he said, this is how I'm gonna do it. And that's it. We really should follow with that pattern, right? Um, follow with such a pattern so that he would do a thing and a man is able to come in contact with it. I know at the end of the year, twenty twenty-four, we talked about Kairos moment and things like that. If you don't remember, you should go and listen to it, right? Preparing for the new year, I think that was what we titled it. And it's, there's always such times when it happens, right? So I went through all of these things to say to us that there are special meetings and we should not look down on them. You know, we should not look down on them and say, well, it's just one, it's just one of the touch meetings, right? Or because we don't have a hundred people, we don't have fifty people who say, well, it's just one of those meetings. It is a special meeting to be plenty people. No, 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 no. Don't disregard such meetings. You can imagine Peter, James and John going there, right? And then they disregard that meeting. You know, there was another special meeting and these guys disregarded it. Jesus called the same set of people and he said, come guys, come pray with me. And he didn't, he just said, tarry with me one hour. And these guys couldn't. And when he was done, they now woke up, ah, master, let's go. And he said, no, the time is over. The time to pray has passed. Now it's time to reap the harvest of the prayer. It's time to cry. It's time to be sad. It's time to run away, right? It's time to dispass. And so it's important for us to know that we shouldn't disregard special meetings, especially because, oh, it's just us now, right? Or we're not, we're, it's not, we, we don't, we're not plenty. We don't have plenty people coming from somewhere. No. For instance, in the history of the children of Israel, you find out that they've had meetings where God said, I'm coming and I will speak and it would come like thunder, right? And the people will hear it and they will tremble. And that happened. The people knew God was around. And then in another situation, God came in a tent with just seventy people. Israel, Israel were at least six hundred thousand men. So we're looking at two million people at the least, two million people. But it was just seventy men that came and the Bible said the prophesied in Numbers 11. And God met them there. Imagine those people are saying, ah, it's not even that we, it's not big, it's not large. They would miss out on what God has planned for them. Think about this, Elijah and Elisha. God had told Elijah that this is what will happen. The prophets knew it. So because they, they are in a community of prophets, it wasn't the thing of, um, of one person knowing and the other not knowing. They are prophets. So they caught it. They knew that Elijah was going to go. And Elisha was in, was next in line. At least that was what it looked like. But Elisha didn't take for granted the fact that when I see my master living, if I can see it, then I will withhold, right? And it's important for us to know that such a place is how God passed that man to learn. Right? They were just two people. They didn't have a million people there. They didn't have, it was just two people. Right? And God was able to move and Elijah was able to do so much more, right? Do so much more with his life, right? So today we're talking about the anatomy of the move of God in special meetings. In special meetings and um, let's turn our Bibles to Numbers. Numbers. I hope that we'll just find some time to pray today as well. All right, look at verse sixteen, Numbers chapter eleven, verse sixteen. And the Lord said unto Moses, gather unto me seventy men of the elders of Israel, whom thou knowest to be the elders of the people and officers over them, and bring them unto the tabernacle of the congregation, that they may stand there with thee. And I will come down and talk with thee there. And I will take of the spirit which is upon thee and will put it upon them. And they shall bear the body of the people with thee, that thou bear it not thyself alone. And say thou unto the people, sanctify yourself against tomorrow. And ye shall eat, and ye shall eat flesh, for ye have wept in the ears of the Lord, saying, who shall give us flesh to eat? For it was well with us in Egypt, foolish people. Therefore the Lord will give you flesh and ye shall eat. Ye shall not eat one day, nor two days, nor five days, neither ten days, nor twenty days, but even a whole month until it come out at, come out at your nostrils. And it shall be lots among you, because that ye have despised the Lord, which is among you, and have wept before him, saying, why came we forth out of Egypt? And Moses said, said, the people among whom I am are six hundred thousand footmen. And thou hast said, I will give them flesh, that they may eat a whole month. Shall the flock and the herds be slain for them, to suffice them? Or shall all the fish of the sea be gathered together for them, to suffice them? And the Lord said unto Moses, is the Lord's hand waxed short? Thou shalt see now whether my word shall come to pass unto thee or not. And Moses went out and told the people the words of the Lord and gathered the seventy men of the elders of the people and set them round about the tabernacle. And the Lord came down in a cloud and spoke unto him and took of the spirit that was upon him and gave it unto the seventy elders. And it came to pass that when the spirit rested upon them, they prophesied and did not cease. But there remained two of them, two of the men in the camp, of the name of the one was elderd and the name of the other madeard. And the spirit rested upon them and they were, and they were of them that were written, but went not out unto the tabernacle, and they prophesied in the camp, right? And they prophesied in the camp. So we see a situation where God had called a meeting and he said, consecrate these guys, these elders, bring them to me. Let them come separate, right? And what it means to consecrate, we can say, we can use the word sanctify or sanctification, right? And it would, it would really mean for a person to set themselves aside, right? If you're the one sanctifying yourself, right? It would mean to set yourself aside. It would mean to, um, to hallow something, right? Um, so it is, it is almost like for such great times and such great seasons that they were about to have, it was good for them to be separate. And God said, call these men separately to this place, right? So they were set apart. And, and we, we must understand that for supernatural encounters to happen, did I say they must set apart? They must be set apart. For supernatural activities to happen, for supernatural activities to take place, we must understand that consecration is important. Now consecration in our, in our, no, let me not jump, let me not jump. Exodus chapter nineteen. Exodus nineteen. Exodus nineteen. Verse ten. And the Lord said unto Moses, go unto the people and sanctify them today and tomorrow and let them wash their clothes and be ready against the third day. For the third day, the Lord will come down in the sight of all the people upon Mount Sinai. And thou shall set bounds unto the people round about, saying, take heed to yourself, that ye go not up into the mount or touch the border of it. Whosoever touched the mount shall be, shall be surely put to death, right? So he says, sanctify the people, prepare them. How would they prepare themselves? He says, let them wash, let them clean their clothes, let them have a bath. Because they are coming to the mount where God is going to reveal himself. And it's important for us to know that sanctification in their time was in such literal terms, right? So, oh, sanctify it for God. It means keep it clean, make it whole. Uh, wash it, make it beautify it, right? For, for a man, for instance, let him, let him have a bath. For the, for the priests, God will say, let them sanctify theirself. Moses should sanctify them, let them sanctify theirself. And what will happen is that they will have to wear clean underwear, they will have to wear clean clothes. So the clothes that they used to roast, they don't use that clothes to go into the Holy of Holies. They would go change into something else, then go. So it is a process for them where they had to be clean, they had to be neat, they had to look presentable and well put together. That is what the consecration looked like. And it was not just of the physical outwardness, it was also of their inward man, right? They had to have their mind straight. They had to have their minds set up properly. In our day, fortunately and unfortunately, right? But more fortunately is the fact that sanctification is not just in clothing, right? It is not just in clothing. Um, it is more in the heart. So a man would sanctify his heart before God. What that means is if, for instance, in an Exodus nineteen situation, the Bible said that God was coming on the third day. So he said, let them take these two days and prepare themselves for that study. Are you with me? So it means that for us today, if we're going to prepare like we're preparing and we have said, okay, we're going to fast and pray for this amount of time. What that means is that we're looking forward to that day and we are holding it in our hearts. Part of sanctification, part of consecration for such a special meeting would be to meditate. To meditate on things that we expect to see, things that we expect to experience, things that we expect to come into, things that we expect to receive. We meditate on them, meditate on them. Oh, God is real. God is true. God is gonna be present. Therefore I can receive all that I want. I can receive all that God wants for me. We meditate on those things. That's part of the consecration. That's part of it, you know? And consecration would, would also speak of, of course, as, as, as I've said, we're fasting, we're praying. We take extra time to pray, take the extra time to think upon these things, to study about these things. Right? To have reverence in our heart for the meeting. You know, some people will prepare for meeting and then in their mind, they are thinking like, ah, I'll just find a way to miss the first session or I'll find a way to come late. They are, I'm going to be there, like, I know where I'll be there. But in their heart, they made up their mind that they will come late. So it's, it's such a thing that a man has to come to that place where he recognizes and understands that, yes, I am going to be there, but in my consecration, it is not just being present, it is being present on time. It is being present properly prepared. You know, you can imagine coming for a special meeting and then you don't have any Bible. And so what happened? He said, ah, I was just, I was just rushing. What do you mean you were just rushing, right? You've had a week to prepare at least. You've had a day to prepare at least. Then you say you forgot your Bible, right? So such a thing shows that this person didn't really reverence this meeting. This person didn't really acknowledge the fact that God will be here, right? So setting our hearts in the right position to receive and to be a complete and full part of the meeting. Right? It is about thinking about the meeting in a favorable, favorable light. You know, where a person just in their mind, in their heart thinks and extends the meeting. Oh, I know God is gonna meet me there. Oh, I know I experienced the supernatural. Oh, I know that I'll get on fire for God. Oh, I know that I'll receive something tremendous. Oh, I know that God will touch me. Oh, I know that my evangelism, my outreach is, my discipleship will get better. I'll get better and better and better, right? So it, it's, it's possible for a person to look at a meeting like that and come and have a good meeting, right? So they say, wow, this meeting was a great meeting. It blessed me. And then another person is saying, it was just, it was just there. The difference is that one person came with consecrated heart. The other person came, well, it's just one of the, they all said we should come, right? And that, that's, that's, that's not how we would experience the move of God. The second thing I'll talk about is desire or what I call expectations. Desire or expectations. Desire or expectations. Moses had spoken to the people. He said, hey, God is gonna come. God has told you guys to come to Sinai. So the people knew what to expect. They knew what to anticipate. Their minds, their hearts, they were ready to receive. If we turn to Nehemiah. Right? Nehemiah. Nehemiah chapter one, sorry, chapter eight. Verse one, and all the people gathered themselves together as one man into the street that was before the water gate. And they spoke unto Ezra the scribe to bring the book of the law of Moses, which the Lord had commanded to Israel. The people came and spoke to the priests and said, bring the book of the law and come and teach us. Right? And then verse two, and Ezra the priest brought the law before the congregation, both of men and of women and of all that could hear with understanding upon the first day of the seventh month, right? So if we're going by our days, it would be the first day of July, July one. They all came to the water gate and then to the street by the water gate. And then the Bible said that he began to read, right? Um, look at verse eight. Oh, no. Yes, verse eight. We'll read verse eight to verse twelve, I believe. So they read in the book of the law of God distinctly and gave the sense and caused them to understand the reading. Right? This is all of the people that were on the left and on the right of the priests. And Nehemiah, which is the Tishita, Tishata and Ezra the priest, the scribe, and the Levites that taught the people, said unto all the people, this day is holy unto the Lord your God. Mourn not, nor weep. For all the people wept when they heard the words of the law. Verse ten, and he said unto them, go your way, eat the fat and drink the sweet and send portions unto them for whom nothing is spared, is prepared. For this day is holy unto our Lord. Neither be ye sorry, for the joy of the Lord is your strength. So the Levites steed, steed all the people, saying, hold your peace, for the day is holy. Neither be ye grieved. And all the people went their way to eat and to drink and to send portions and to make great mertz, because that, because they had understood the words that were declared unto them. So you see these people, they came with expectations. They knew what, they, they had desire to understand what God's word was and they had a desire to want to live by it. So they called the priests, they said, please come and teach us, right? And not just teach us, read this thing to us. And by the time they began to make the sense to them in verse eight, they began to explain this, they began to explain to them. And as they were making sense of it to them, the Bible said the people began to cry. They began to mourn because they realized that they were living away from the dictates of God. They realized that they were not living according to the words that God had given to Moses. And so that made them sad. They realized that they would not actually be able to keep up with it, you know? And then the, the scribes, Nehemiah, Ezra, the Levites, they said, you know what, guys? There's no need to mourn. This is the day that the Lord has made, right? This is a day that is holy unto God. There's no need to mourn. Rather rejoice, because the joy of the Lord is your strength. That means that, that's, that sadness you're feeling because you feel that you're unable to live up to the dictates of all God's word is saying. What happens is that if you draw from the joy of the Lord, then you find out that you're able to do. I mean, the very next chap, chapter, the Bible said that they began to, not even chapter, by verse thirteen. They began to live according to the dictates. They were able to carry on. So these guys had desires. They came with desires in their heart and they were able to find something tangible at such a meeting. We, I've been in meetings where teaching is just going on and then men begin to cry. I mean, it has happened to me. That is how I, um, the second time I got saved, well, not second time I got saved, but more like the time when I really, really did say, ah, I need to take this thing seriously, right? It was a preaching going on, teaching on, um, Moses and how that God was done by Pastor Tolu Moody and how that God had him, um, did I say God now? His mother had made a net, a boat of, um, a net for him and then put him in it and then he was on the Nile. The Nile was filled with crocodiles and all of that. But the mother made it with such a cane that crocodiles fear. And she put it on there and then he was moving. And he was teaching that, and he was talking about how that God's plan is to make us that even within such a place, even within something that is bad, he would, he would get the results out of us properly if we are to stay within that boat. Because you can imagine, it was something made that would repair crocodiles. Imagine if the small Moses decided that he would jump out and go into the water. He will become dinner, lunch and dinner for them, right? And then he went on to talk about Elijah, how that the Bible said that Elijah was running and he girded up his loins and he began to run, right? And what he was teaching was that if a man would yield to the spirit and then gird up their loins, the spirit of God will use them to outrun the chariots of, of Ahab. And why he was saying that, all that that was saying to me was, if you don't put your life in order, you will not be able to accomplish what God wants you to accomplish. I was an usher. I was part of the organizers of that meeting. And I was standing there in the middle before anybody knew what was going on. I was already crying. I was just crying. I knew that, ah, Jesus. And so it's possible for us to have such meetings where the word of God comes to a man and some people might hear that same thing and be like, we thank God, we give God praise. Some other people will hear it and then there will be fire burning in their heart. Don't, don't get it twisted. Every time you see a special meeting where things are going on, there's always that one person, few people who never come to a full experience of what everybody else is experiencing in the midst, right? So he's, they, they came with desires. Look at, um, Luke twenty-four. Luke twenty four, we're still talking desires, Luke twenty four. So Jesus had died, he'd been buried, he's resurrected now, and verse forty nine. And behold, I send the promise of my Father upon you, but carry ye in the city of Jerusalem until ye be endued with power from. On high, verse fifty two, and they worshipped him and returned to Jerusalem with great joy, and were continually in the temple praising and blessing God, amen. So they were continually in the temple praising and blessing God, Jesus had told them, in Jerusalem, you will be endued with power from on high. The promise of my Father will come upon you, so go there and prepare, go there and wait, right? And they they did as Jesus said, so they they had, they were anticipating it. If we go to the book of Acts, Acts of the Apostles, chapter one. Acts of the Apostles, chapter one, uh, verse four. And being assembled together with them commanded them ah, that they should not depart from Jerusalem, but wait for the promise of the Father, which said he. Did I say verse four? Yes, good, which said he, ye have heard of me, for John truly baptized with water. But ye shall be baptized with the Holy Ghost not many days hence. When, ah, so thi- this was, this was such a situation where these folks. Had heard from Jesus that this is what is going to happen, so they knew what they were looking forward to, and they had set their heart in order. They had set their heart in that place, that we are going to receive, everything that Jesus said we are going to receive, right? They had expectations, and I I remember when I used to investigate, i- in my words, right? Don't take it to the bank, I used to investigate certain things in church, you know, like laying on of hands and all of that. Are you, and then I began to. Watch videos and read people and try to understand this thing, right? And I saw people who began to, they were trying to talk down the particular preacher. And not, ah, so a particular preacher was their object, but every other person in that line, and then they were like, oh, that. It is, it is, um, what's that word, when you, hypnoti- yes, hypnotizing, or something like that, that. When you tell people that the power of God is gonna come upon them. And that when power of God comes upon them, they can fall under the anointing, says you have already told them that they should fall. So when you go and you lay your hands on them, of course they will fall, you know, and they, it looked like they had an argument. Because is there something like that? Yes, oh, yes, there is. But is it, i- is that what happens when the power of God comes on a person? No. Or when you tell the person that I'll lay hands on you and you begin to speak in tongues, do you know how many people we have told that and they're not speaking tongues? Do you get what I'm talking about? Do you know how many people we have said, oh, just, uh. As I come by you, I just touch you and you speak in tongues, they will not speak in tongues, they'll just be there looking. You're saying, thank you, Father, they'll just be saying, oh, God, help me, God, help me, God, help me, God, help me. In Jesus' name, 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 they just keep saying it, they won't speak in tongues. Right, so I I I used to, when I used to hear those things, I just wondered, ah, is this, is this what it is really? Is this what happens, you know? On one day, I went for a meeting, and the meeting was a couple of people, maybe, let's say thirty, forty people there about. And so we said, okay, everybody just hold your hands around and then. Let's pray, right, so I was the center of attraction. And I said, okay, let's pray, and I just held the hands of the people and as we began to pray, it was like everybody went down like dominos, ah. I opened my eye, I was shocked, I was like, eh? Eh, I didn't tell them anything, I didn't give them any, I didn't prime them, I didn't say, oh. So those things began to make me realize that you might have heard some people who are mischievous, right? And they have had some ideas, and they said, well, when you tell people what to expect, then they will not, they would, um, do. How you want them to expect. But that's, that's not true, because when you tell somebody that you will die if you eat, they still went on the earth in Genesis. It's enough for them to have sense and say, ah, they said I will eat, I will die if I eat too. So i- it's, it's, it's not like that, the power of God can be tangible, like we see in the book of Acts, right? Power of God can be tangible, like really, really tangible, such that. Men can flow in the things of the spirit without any issues. And they can, they they can come prepared, knowing that this is what we are going to experience, do you understand what I'm saying? For instance, a believers meeting, everybody should know what is going to happen. So what they would just do is they come prepared, that I, there is no way I come, they will not start, you know how people feel like, oh. Not people feel like it's true, right? When, when people pray long in tongues, they flow better in the things of the spirit. When people pray often in tongues, they flow better, so it is like when they come for the meeting, that is when they now want to spend the time praying. Before they get activated, before they now start, do you understand how I'm saying? So where other people come in prepared already, they come for the meeting, they are ready. And as the beginning, they'll say, guys, let's begin to bless one another, and then there are people who have words already, they didn't even speak in tongues, because they've been speaking in tongues and coming, right? It is completely different for somebody else who feels like it is when I come for the meeting. That I will now start praying, oh, God, help my tongue, oh, God, help my tongue, help my tongue, help my tongue, help me to know what to say. You know, and then where everybody's moving and coasting and coasting and coasting and going deeper, deeper, higher, higher. Them, they're just whining, you know, like those generators where, I I know you guys might not know it. But it's like where they convert car engines into generators, I used to have one of them at home. So you would whine minutes like this. And then you keep going and going and going and going, and you go so fast, once you take out your hand, you're holding on to something, once you remove that thing, it would kick. So it's like people want that to happen in church and then when they come, the opening prayer is whining. So after like thirty minutes, ah. And i- it's, 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 at least it's good that they have a church where they can whine and get better. But then I hear people say strange things, I heard somebody saying, I watched the video recently, today, 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 like this. The guy said, ah, some of you, you people do too much. They say, let's pray, they haven't even said the prayer point, they've already started speaking in tongues. I'm like, ah, what, what do you want them to do? You have told us, let's pray, ah, go away, straight away, that, ah, do you, do I need to? Of course, it's okay to hear the, but what he was trying to say is that they just tell you the prayer topic, they haven't prayed in the understanding, you just start praying in tongues, that's not how it is done. Have you read the book of Acts, Acts fourteen, verse fifteen, what is it then? I'll pray in the spirit, I'll pray in the understanding, right? Also, I'll, I'll sing in the spirit and I'll sing in the understanding also, so it is almost like. The apostle was giving precedence to doing it in tongues first, because that's how we get the inspiration. Right, that's how we get inspiration, so when there, you see there are two people, there's one person that is saying, ah, you first sing, oh, Lord, thank you. Oh, I bless your name, Jesus, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I am a man on Sunday, according to my pastor. Then from there, you not start whining, whining, then before you know, you not start doing. There's no need, if you can just start. There's no difference, the difference between the two is that, one, you think that you need to whine God in your understanding before you get into tongues. Meanwhile, those of us that know, we know that we do it in tongues first and we're doing it well, then we have the interpretation. Then the spirit of God will put things in our hearts to pray about, then we're able to pray the right words about the prayer that has been given to us, you get what I'm saying? So in a special meeting, let me not derail myself, or in what we call special meetings. We must come with desires, we must know what we are anticipating, do you get what I'm talking about? We must know what we're anticipating, oh, do we expect this, do we expect that, are we looking forward to this, are we looking forward to that? Right, and we must all have, I mean, we have a collective expectation, we're trusting God that we will have a supernatural experience. Whereby our evangelism and discipleship will get better, not just getting better, but get much more stronger. All right, get stronger, get stronger, that we're able to receive much more, that we're able to go out for outreaches, for those of us who are unable to. Go out on our own, I say, I'm going to, I'm going to talk to much people today, and I'm going to start talking to people every day, right? I I've heard some people say before, and it's, it's, it's good for us to have such practices. You know why some people say, oh. A week will not go by without me preaching to somebody about Jesus, some people say a day will not go by, I must preach to somebody about Jesus. I've been in meetings before and pastors say, guys, ah, you say you must preach to ten people. This is not, can I talk to you, say, no, 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 I'm interested in it, now you say that's one, eh, eh, that's two, no. You spend time to preach to somebody in detail, if, get them saved, one. You preach, teach, explain the things of the spirit, speak in tongues, two. You preach, interpret tongues, three, you preach, get them saved, get a few, get them speaking tongues, four. And you do ten before you say, ah, we are back, thank you, Jesus. And if you now go and spend one hour with one person, you have ten hours to go, you have to do ten, if you are doing one hour, right? But the point is, we can, we can have desires that, oh, my outreaches are gonna get better. The way by which I present the gospel to the people around me gets better. I'm able to answer these questions, I'm able to reach people, I'm able to reach the lost much more. I mean, one of the reasons why God put this in our heart, if, if, if there was an issue with the title of our church. Right, with the Watergate Church, if there was a title, there was an issue with that name, the name would have gone forward, probably been like maybe Unashamed Assembly or something like that. Because that's like a major thing on, behind this work that we're doing. Right, major, 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 major. So not, of course, the name doesn't really, the nomenclature is not really the cocoa, it's not the most important thing, but. The point behind it is major with what we're doing here. And, um, uh, probably from Saturday, we'll have some Bible verses that we'll quote every Sunday. At every time we meet, so that we'll know it to be in the back of our head like this. Amen, amen, all right, and then, um, number three would be oneness, oneness, Second Chronicles. Second Chronicles, let's see, an interesting situation. They were, Second Chronicles, chapter five. Like never before. Like never before. Your glory fills the earth. And verse eleven, and it came to pass, when the priests were come out of the holy place, for all the priests that were present were sanctified. And did not then wait by course, right? And also the the Levites, which were the singers, all of them of Assaf, of Herman, of Jeduton. Jeduton, with their sons and their brethren, being arrayed in white linen. Having cymbals and salt trees and harps stood at the east end of the altar. And with them, a hundred and twenty priests surrounding with trumpets. And it came to pass, as the trumpeters and the singers were as one. To make one sound, to be heard in praising and thanking the Lord. And when they lifted up their voice with the trumpets and the cymbals and instruments of music. And praised the Lord, saying, for he is good, for his mercy endureth forever. That then the house was filled with a gr- with a cloud, even the house of the Lord. So that the priests could not stand to minister by reason of the cloud, for the glory of the Lord had filled their house of God. Right, it says that these guys came together, they had, you remember, we talked about sanctification, so they had sanctified themselves, they had expectations. Right, and then what now brought everything together, the Bible said that they were with one, they they were, they were, they were in one accord, right? They had one mind and they wanted to sing in one voice, what that means is that they wanted to sing together. Not one person is singing like this and then the other person is singing like that, no. We all know what we're singing, for the Lord is good and his mercy endureth forever, not that somebody will now be saying, ah, you know. That God is a God of vengeance, no, not vengeance today, the Lord is good and his mercy is endureth forever. The Bible said they all decided to sing it at once, they all decided to sing it with one voice. So all this trumpet, all the tambourine, all the cymbals, everybody was working together in harmony, right? So it wasn't a thing of, everybody singing in, uh, six eight. And then the, the, the keyboard just decided to start playing salsa. What are you doing, right? At that point, maybe somebody would have gone and given him chokehold. So I mean, and then get another keyboardist, right? But they were all singing one, in one accord, and the Bible said that they sang, because they sang in one accord, that the glory of God came and filled the house of God. And you know that what we are is the house of God, right? When we come together, we're at the temple of God, we're at that house of God, and God's glory filling his house is, is it not no- no- natural, right? So imagine I have a perfume, like I put on a perfume today that somebody doesn't like, and then I come in and they say, ah, you have used that rubbish perfume again. Do you know what I'm saying? So it means that that thing has filled the place where it is. But the glory of God didn't just come in the sense of coming, but it it came in a cloud, so it was tangible, it was something that could, that was palpable. They felt it, they knew that this was God in our midst, and the Bible said that the priests were unable to minister, right? They were unable to minister by the reason of the cloud, right, because God had filled the house. Um, in Acts, chapter two, the book of Acts of the Apostles, chapter two. Acts, chapter two, and verse one. And when the day of Pentecost was fully come, they were all with one accord in one place. And suddenly there came a sound from heaven as of a rushing mighty wind, and it filled all the house where they were sitting. Does this remind you of what happened in Second Chronicles, chapter five? The glory of God came, they were all in one accord, the glory of God came, it was like a cloud filling the entire room. And then here, the same thing is happening, they were in one accord, the glory of God came like a wind, filling the entire place, right? And then they began to see things by the spirit, they saw cloven tongues like a cast of fire, you know, they heard the rushing mighty wind, they sensed the wind. You know, and then they began to speak with tongues, so it means that that spirit of oneness is coming in one accord. Knowing what we're looking forward to achieve, what we're looking forward to get, what we're looking forward to lay hold on. We all have to have that desire, so it's not a, 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 a thing of, all of us are coming, trusting God, that as we come together, we're able to receive from God. We're able to have our lives transformed, we're able to have a supernatural activity going on here, and then somebody else is coming. I just think, ah, let me just come, just for the sake of coming. You know, I I I used to, I I think I even wrote something down about stuff like this. How that, in many things in life. Philosophically, right, they tell you that things are not black and white, so there's black, white, then there's an in-between, and there are gray areas. But the truth is, in many things in life, there is no. Middle ground, for instance, when it comes to honor, you are either honoring or you're in dishonor. Do you get what I'm saying? I- 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 it is either you are honoring the person. Because if you are not honoring the person, are you going to say, I'm not disowning you, but I'm not honoring you, I'm just in the middle, no. You are already in dishonor, and if you are not in dishonor, then you're in honor, there's no middle ground. I- yeah, there's nothing like, oh, there's, there's a space in between where I don't have to honor you and I don't have to dishonor you, I'll just, hmm, I'm just there, no. You are either in honor or you're in dishonor, you are in, either in dishonor or you're in honor. Another situation is prayer, you're praying or you're not praying, you think I'm saying, okay, let's pray. And then all of us are praying, oh, Lord, we thank you, we give you praise, oh, God, Lord, we pray, that the city is flooded with light, Lord, you pray. And then there's somebody that's just there, say, ah, brother, you're not praying. I'm, I'm, brother, are you praying? It's not that I'm praying, but I'm not, not praying, so what, what, what are you doing? I'm being prayed on, because you are being prayed on if you think that is an, so there's no middle ground. The same way with this, either you are in one accord with the, with the meeting, with the saints present, or you are not. So it is either I have the same desires, I have the same mind, I have the same heart concerning what is going on today, going, going on now, or I don't. So you can imagine somebody will come to church and then they come, they don't have a Bible, they don't have a pen, I'm not talking about the first timer. Of course, you know, first timer doesn't have the same one accord with you. Who doesn't know, who wasn't invited, per se, and told what to do. Or you, somebody, a church member just comes and then, no pen, no Bible, no nothing, they're just chilling, not in this church anyways. But in case it happens, it means that that person is not in one accord with us, because if you are going to be one accord, you know that here, we read the Bible. Uh, because we try to get acquainted with it. Uh, because we try to get acquainted with it. Do you get what I'm saying? Not, um, I have tried many times to do without this. Maybe it's just my old school self and maybe it is just me knowing that having that idea, that I have my Bible separately. You know, many people have their Bibles on their phones and it's a terrible thing. Because you, distraction, distraction is like, hmm. You're trying to read it on your phone and then you're trying to read it on your iPad and then something just come, bloop, bloop, new job alert, LinkedIn. Your particular project manager role that you're looking for is, can I say, ah? Oh, Mark, 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 Mark. I read Mark last month now. Let me just quickly go and do this job application and I'll come back. From job application, you find out that one of your friends who used to work in one hospital in Nigeria is now working with United Nations in New Zealand. You're like, wow! And then you check, you know, find out that your friend knew somebody, one of your other friends, who you didn't know, they knew each other. And then that's it, you are going down, you forget that you were, you are no longer already in Mark. You're now marking attendance on people's Indian status. Then from there, you remember that there was something interesting on Twitter you saw. And you're like, ah, let me just quickly go there. For sometimes you don't even know. Because it's just like, you just, you don't realize that you're already on Twitter. And then you're going to your bookmark and then you are reading the thread. And then from the thread, somebody said, to really understand this thread, you need to read what this guy said. And then you go there. Then from there, you see that to have a full understanding of this thread, you need to, on, you need to watch this video. And that is how you go down the drain. Meanwhile, if you had your paper Bible, I'll be easy here that you think you're going to do volume? Nothing. You would just be reading it and be going. There's no distraction whatsoever. Anyways, on, on a lighter note, but I'm saying that it's a discipline. And it's not so easy to memorize Bible on paper. Uh, you, people who even want to memorize, they still write it down, alright? So, um, that, that's, that's me, right? That's me on this one. But what I'm trying to say is that, imagine somebody comes in and then they don't, they didn't come with their Bible, they didn't come with a writing pad, nothing. I mean, I don't have an issue with you writing on an iPad. Just write, write, just write and ensure that it is okay. When you need it, you can have it. And then somebody comes in and no, no Bible. It means that they don't plan to read the Bible with us when we're reading. It means that they don't plan to take notes with us when we are learning. It just shows that they are not in one accord with us. So the Bible says that these guys were with one accord and what then happened, the resultant effect was that they were all able to speak with tongues. Look at chap- uh, chapter two, verse three. And they appeared unto them, cloven tongues like as of fire, and it sat upon each of them. And they were all filled with the Holy Ghost and began to speak with other tongues, as the Spirit gave them utterance. They all, who was in one accord? Was fully come, verse one, and they were all with one accord. In verse four, and they were all filled with the Holy Ghost. What this means is that the amount of people that are in one accord, and the amount of people that will experience what is going on. The priests, the, um, psalmists and all of that, they were all in one accord. And the glory of God came and all of them sensed it, they knew it, they knew that something had happened. The same way here, all of them were in one accord and all of them spoke with tongues. All of them interpreted tongues, all of them saw visions, all of them heard supernaturally. And it's important for us to note that when we approach meetings like this one, we must come in one accord. We must come ready to be in the groove, right? We must come ready to be in the groove, be like Elijah, sorry, Elisha. Don't be that person who just comes, say, well, whatever happens, happens. Care, Sarah, Sarah, whatever will be, will be. I'm not really just, I'm not, I'm not looking forward to anything spectacular. You know, whatever God will do, I've met people like that, say, whatever God will do, he will do. I'm not just ah, ah, you know, I just feel like, I, I don't want to come into the, the place, having things in my mind. I just want God to just reach out to me from nowhere. There's nobody that God reached out to from nowhere like that. You find desires there, even the people who you think they had no desire, they did. Let me give you examples. It looked like Moses was a, was a shepherd boy, keeping sheep and all of that. But he had already attempted to save the children of Israel. It didn't work out. You must know that that has been in his heart. So when the fire was burning, God didn't just come to a random guy, he came to somebody who had the heart of Israel, who he had prepared. Look at the other guy, who looked like he was nothing, like he wasn't thinking about it. But when the angel appeared in Judges, chapter six, to Gideon, verse eleven, and he says, thou mighty man of Valo. He said, what do you mean mighty man of Valo? He began to talk about how that he was small in rank, which means these are things that he had considered. Which means these are things that were on his mind already. He is considering, ah, I wish I can, ah, if I, if I, if only I was from a strong family. If only I was from a family that was well-to-do, if only I was from a family that, that had the say, then I would go and I would fight. And the angel came and said, you're a smart guy, you are threshing wheat in a winepress where the enemy cannot find it. Because nobody's going to expect that they will be threshing wheat, that they'll be doing wine at this time. Because as they are, as all your olives getting ripe, they are collecting everything. So they know that there's nothing going on in the winepress. But you, you know that when you take your, your wheat, instead of them having it, you go and hide in a winepress where they don't expect anybody to be, and there you thresh your wheat. You're a smart guy. You, you are innovative. That is why all Gideon's victories were innovative. None of them were just random, oh, just go and destroy. No, three hundred men. God used three hundred men that didn't do anything and they won the battle. God said, well, these people are too much. Take them to the water, let's see, anyone who wants to drink and just puts his mouth like a dog and he's all laughing. Say, that one, that one is not ready for war. The one who drops his weapon, ah, he said that one is not ready for war. But the one who goes and holds everything in his lat, takes the water, drinks. He said, that is the person, and they were only three hundred from thousands of people. And God used him like that. Alright? God used him like that. See Daniel, Shadrach, Meshach, Abednego, you think those boys are just random people? That God just, ah, let me just look, let me just look for something, ah, let's just see what will happen. No, these boys were well-read. So they knew, Daniel said, I knew by the books. So it wasn't a random thing that God just chose a random person. Everybody must have desires. Those desires have to be there. Look at Nehemiah. Nehemiah wanted, the Bible said that when they had come to him from Israel, from Jerusalem, they said, listen, the wall is gone. Jerusalem is empty. If anybody comes, they will attack us, we have no defense. And he was sad, he was, he was weak, he prayed and fasted. And the king asked him, he said, what's happening to you? You know, in today's world, we'll just say, ah, my Lord, nothing, I'll be fine. Some people will say, ah, my Lord, nothing, ah, ah, no, it's, it's big. They say, ah, my Lord, there's a lot going on. The Lord said, what is going on? He said, this is what is happening, this is what is happening, this is what is happening. He said, okay, go, go and deliver your people. It has been on his heart. So God doesn't just use random people. God doesn't just reach out to random people because anything he wants. No, you must come with desires. You must have desires, you must be hungry, you must be thirsty. Right? And he said, anyone who is hungry, anyone who is thirsty, he will fill. Amen. He will fill. So let's just spend the next few minutes, let's just pray, pray like you mean it. Pray that, God, in this meeting, I will receive everything that you have for me. Every opportunity to receive, I will receive. In the teaching of the word, in prayer, in blessing one another, in experiencing things, I will experience. In my heart, burning for evangelism, I will get that. I will not leave the meeting the same way I came. I will go back home in a, in a much zealous manner. Now, when I see the unsaved, the zeal and the passion of God is present there, that I will go back with knowledge. That I have ep- epignosis, that I have precise and accurate knowledge when it comes to your, your plan for salvation. When it comes to your desire to have all men saved and a noun is lost. Prevent or your heart has not been set on anything. This is an opportunity to get your desires up. This is your opportunity to have good and holy desires. To have holy passions. Lord, that we're all in one accord. Oneness of heart, oneness of desire. Our desires. To touch you, oh, God. Tangible experiences. Never I don't go back the same way I came. That my life and my ministry is transformed forever, changed forever, moved forward forever. Oh, glory to God. Amen, amen. Let's just lift up our hands and give God praise. Let's thank him because we know that he's answered our prayers. Let's thank him because we know that all our desires, as we lay them to him this week, as we're praying, as we're fasting, as we're waiting on God, that we receive all that he has for us.